Good morning Birmingham. Today is November 1st, 2022. The time is now 9:37. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Our invocation will be led today by Ankeeta Patel Ayuvadi at the BAPS Swaminarian Hindu Temple and Pledge of Allegiance will be held by Counselor Hunter Williams. If you're able, please stand and join us. Thank you.
Namaste and Jai Samneen. We pray to Bahuwan Almighty for there to be infinite and limitless good, light, and enlightenment in Birmingham. We pray for peace to prevail through and through in our great city of Birmingham and for all to be blessed with utmost happiness, success, prosperity, and best of health. Finally, we pray for everyone's well wishes to come true and for great progress in the city. Let there be peace for all. The ancient prayer from the Upnishad says, "Asatoma Sadgamaya, Tamasoma Jyotiragamaya, Mritirmah Amritamgamaya." Om Shanti, Shanti, Shantihi. This prayer translates to, "Lord, guide us from ignorance to knowledge. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality." Om. Peace, peace, peace. Jai Samneen, Jai Shikrishna, Sarvasanthan Kijay, and Amit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. At this time, Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Hey, Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Abbott? I got you. Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Moore? Morning, sir. Councilmember O'Quinn?
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams?
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Woods? Council President Pro Tim Smithman?
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Allison?
Good morning. At this time, the minutes are not ready from June 7th, 2022, to October 25th, 2022. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Madam President. Good morning to the council. Good to see you all this morning.
Morning.
Good morning to the public as well. I have a few announcements, council. One, starting with the food drive. The city of Birmingham is collecting items for holiday boxes that will be distributed to residents in need. Donations are being collected today through November 3rd. Again, that's starting today through November 3rd at the Boutwell. The address is 1930 Reverend Abraham Woods Jr. Boulevard. And the times will be from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. each day, again, from today through Thursday, November 3rd. Family-sized canned goods are preferred. In addition to the food drive, Madam President and Council, we're also doing a toy drive. That's annually that we do. The city of Birmingham, along with CBS 42 and M First Credit Union, is hosting our Magic City Toy Drive. And that also starts today through, actually, December 9th. So we've got an entire month and some change on that, today through December 9th. Please consider donating new toys, coats, and bicycles to help supplement low to moderately low-income families with their children's holiday wishes. I'm going to, if it's okay with you, Madam President and Council, I want to give you the drop-off locations, which are the Department of Youth Services, Birmingham Police Administration Building, all four police precincts, as well as all the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Stations, as well as all the M First Credit Unions in the city of Birmingham. Also, for families who are in need of support for their children, should register for help on Thursday, November 3rd at 9:00 a.m. at the Department of Youth Services. Again, for families who are in need of support for their children, should register for help on Thursday, November 3rd at 9:00 a.m. at the Department of Youth Services. And for more information, please call 205-320-0879. Again, 320-0879, or go to bhamufirst.org. Speaking of families, I shared this either last week or the week before, but the child tax credit. So just a friendly reminder, some Birmingham residents could be eligible to get thousands of dollars from the child tax credit now through the end of e-filing season, which is by November 15. Eligible residents will be able to claim the earned income tax credit. And to get details, please go to, I'm going to spell it out, and then I'll say it, getctc.org. Again, that's getctc.org. Council, please feel free to definitely share that information on your collective channels and your individual channels. A few more notes, Madam President and Council. The Birmingham Civil Rights Institute is acknowledging and celebrating its 30th year in existence and for what it's giving not only to Birmingham but to the world. On Friday, November 18th, the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute will commemorate its opening with an official 30th anniversary celebration. There will be a week of festivities, including a Night of Great Conversations, performances, reflections, and a one-night-only special exhibit highlighting 30 years of archival acquisitions and exquisite programs. They will also host the 2022 Reverend Fred L. Shoddersworth Human Rights Award and other honors. For more information, you can go to bcri.org. Again, for more information, you can go to bcri.org. Uniform trash bins, the Department of Public Works continues to deliver its first batch of 20,000 uniform trash, well, its first batch of 100,000, with that being in its first batch, 20,000. Uniform trash bins to residents on the eastern side of town. Again, this is the first phase of the 96-gallon bins that will ultimately be provided for each single-family residential home. And for more information, go to birminghamal.gov/pickup. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/pickup for any other information you want. You can find or get, following us on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Instagram, LinkedIn, and Nextdoor. And yes, even for our young people, I think, what is it, Ms. Smithman? For the young people, what do they use? TikTok. Thank you. Yeah, something like that. I'm old. Madam President and Council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mayor Woodson. We did just have a question. We, I know some residents have, they're very excited to get the new, the uniform trash bins. Some people have reported them in other areas other than the east side, so...
Yeah, so the 20,000, let me clarify. 100,000 total. The first dispersion was 20,000. I think what I need to clarify is first, there's 5,000 in each quadrant. 5,000 went east first. And if I am correct, 5,000 are also going to the north quadrant of town, the west quadrant of town, and the south quadrant of town. There are 20-plus routes, so I'm not sure of the routes or the zip codes, but there are 5,000 apiece in each section of the city. Thank you for making sure I clarified that.
Thank you. Pro Tim?
I just want to thank you for that because I was so excited to see it at my parents' house. And that's why I asked, because a constituent had asked me, and they had talked about getting theirs. I was like, wait, they're not on the east side. But I'm really excited to see them coming to the households.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn has a question.
Related question. Have we determined the routes that receive the, I'm just getting questions from constituents about, you know, whether or not to expect a handcart or, I mean, how will people know if they're going to be receiving one of those?
I'm going to let Chief Operations, Chaz Mitchell, say it.
Thank you. Chief Mitchell?
Good morning, council. So, right now, we're working with Public Works and PEP, our GIS system, to make sure that we define all the appropriate routes with the equipment that we have on hand. As soon as the different bins come in and the equipment comes in at the same time, it would expand. And then they have a mechanism where they'll reach out to all the residents to notify them that they will be getting a trash bin and when their designated time of pickup will be.
Phase process.
Yeah. We can't roll it all out at the same time. It's like a tiered phase. As we get equipment in, we roll out the different routes.
So are they getting, you know, something on their door or in the mailbox?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Dr. Del O'Quinn, Madam President and Council, there's an entire communication plan wrapped around this. That's already been detailed out. It includes direct mail to all the households, so everyone will have information. In addition to that, when the bin is delivered, there's information that's inside the bin that's different from the mail piece, but direct information on process, next steps, et cetera. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, we, how about this? We will get what Comms team to tell them to email me so I can share with you.
Thank you.
The process, so everybody knows, so you can communicate neighborhood meetings, et cetera.
Yes, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Williams, did you have a follow-up?
I guess that probably is addressed in that. But like, I've been asked a lot about dates and routes. A lot of people's bins got delivered on, I guess, sun, like this weekend, and it was raining, and they couldn't read whatever piece of literature was attached to the bin. And so I've gotten a lot of emails about, "When do I put this out? When does this start?" All that kind of stuff. So, and on the website, it just says, "Coming soon."
Well, let's talk more on the warrants with the rain situation, because this is my first time hearing that. But related to when everything changes as it relates to pickups, nothing changes before everyone is communicated with.
Okay.
So for clarification, for everyone that has received a bin currently, nothing changes. Your trash is still being picked up twice a week, same days that you currently have. Before things change, all of our residents will be communicated with. That is not, that is not immediate, because we want to make sure everyone has the right information, everyone is informed, and that everything is in place. That first part, though, about the rain, let's, talk to Chief Parks about that.
Thank you. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to ask, I was asked by, I'm sorry. I was asked by older resident.
Even older than me, since we're, my district has a lot of hilly areas, she wanted to know if a smaller bin was available, because she feels like she'll be pulled down the hill by this big giant bin, that she really doesn't create enough garbage to, like, fill up, but she's still worried the bin will pull her down the hill.
Do you have her last name? Do you have her name? Do you remember her name?
I can, I can get it.
I was just going to, just publicly state her name. It's not a problem. But great news. I think part of our information that we've already shared and will continue to share and amplify more is that for seniors and/or for a person that has any form of a health condition, through communication, them directly communicating with us, Public Works Department, and on that route, that our employees or whoever is engaging our pickup would know to actually assist by, instead of that person pulling that cart to the corner, that we can go up to the house and take it for them. I have that right? Mr. Mitchell? Yes?
Yeah, and I've actually had personal experience with this at my in-law's house in Homewood. Their recycle bin pulled me down the driveway, and the neighbor was across the road, and he was afraid it was coming all the way over to his house.
No, we, we'll assist, we will. There's a number, anyone who needs assistance can call.
And get it?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'll report that. That'll probably allay all the fears.
Yes, ma'am. Well, let's, let's, Madam President and Council, let's make sure we get some, all the information we have to them today, so they can...
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, Mr. Clerk, do we have any announcements of boards and agencies for December expiration?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we have vacancies with the Birmingham Lottery Board, Kimberly Richardson, and Lynn Flowers Martin. Both are five-year terms that expire December 31st, 2022. And the Education Committee is responsible for those appointments.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have a reading of the consideration of the consent agenda.
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with items 1, 2, 3, and 4. Please note on these items that the items are actually just recommended by the council. Counselor Tate, Chair of the Public Safety, these items are due to the committee not meeting. There was no recommendation from that standpoint. So Counselor Tate for all items on this page, 1 through 4.
So, if I can, Madam President? Madam President?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mrs. Abbott.
These say, "Recommended by the Public Safety Committee." I think the clerk just said that the chairman of the committee was the only...
Only one recommended the item, simply because the committee didn't meet, but she's making a recommendation. Still up to the council to make the final decision on that.
Okay, but this shouldn't say, "Recommended by the Public Safety Committee," because...
That's what he's trying to tell us.
Okay, so this is just an error.
Yes, ma'am.
We're to correct and correct, clerk.
All right, consent agenda picks back up with page three with items 5, 6, and 7. Page four, we have items 9, 10, and 11 designated as consent. Page five, we have items 12, 13, 14, and 15 on consent. Page six, we have items 16, 17, 18 on consent. Page seven, we have items 19, 20, and 21 on consent. Page eight, we have items 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26 on consent. Page nine, we have items 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31 on consent. Page 10, we have items 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36 on consent. Page 11, we have items 37, 38, and 39 on consent. Please note that on item number 39, on the second line, at the end of that sentence, it should be line item 3 instead of 1. It should be line item 3 instead of 1. Page 12, we have items 40, 41, 42, and 43 on consent. And on item number 42, on the third line from the top, we should strike 3 and. So the number 3 and the word "and" should be stricken, and it should read line items 12 through 19. Page 13, we have items 44, 45, 46, 47, and 48 on consent. Page 14, we conclude with items 49 and 51 on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselors, are there any items you'd like to add or remove from consent? Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Can we remove items 1 through 4 from consent, please?
Items 1 through 4 request to be removed from consent. Any other items? Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes. Page 6, item number 17.
Page 6, item number 17 has been requested to be removed from consent. Any other items, Counselor? You're right. Counselor Abbott?
Yes, I would like to remove item 5 on page 3.
Okay. Item 5, page 3, has been requested to be removed from consent. Any other items? Pro Tim? You okay? Good morning, Counselor Clark and Moore. You okay? All right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation indicated with a "P" will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors, if I can entertain a motion and a second for the consent agenda.
I move approval.
All right. That was Counselor Abbott and Counselor Board?
Yes.
We should be open right now. O'Quinn? And Counselor Williams? Okay. All right.
All right, thank you. Those items that were listed as consent have been approved. If any of those items, you were here representing any of those items, they have been approved, and we will continue with the rest of our meeting. Thank you. Mr. Clark, the first item.
Item 1, a resolution relative to the application of 786 AAA Petroleum LLC for the transfer of an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at 31st Street, QP, 3100, 12th Avenue, North Birmingham, in the Hingawarship parties.
The move.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Counselor Williams, a member of the Public Safety Committee, to conduct the public hearing. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. This item was forwarded by Counselor Tate because it did meet all of the criteria. They also attended the Norwood Neighborhood Association meeting on 6/22/22. 23 were in attendance, zero opposed, and all 23 supported this item unanimously. Are there any questions, or does any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing nobody, I think we're ready for the vote.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll entertain the vote.
Counselor Number O'Quinn?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item number 1 passes. Next item.
Item 2, a resolution, amended resolution number 1403-22, adopted by the council August 16, 2022, approving the application of 513,000 session LLC for the transfer of a special retail liquor license, 150,000, to change the application to a special liquor license, 160,000, to be used in Iron City, Birmingham, 513, 22nd Street, South Birmingham, in the Hingawarship parties.
Motion on the aisle.
Second.
All right. This item is a clerical error that is simply fixing something we have already voted on from the address to be the numerics from 150 to 160. I think we're ready for the vote.
We're ready for the vote. Any questions?
I was curious to know if you know what the difference between a 150 and a 160 is.
I'm just here doing the hearing.
Okay.
That give you the clarity you need, counsel?
I'm going to find clarity. I'll have to find it myself.
All right, the vote has started.
Counselor Number O'Quinn?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item number 2 passes. Next item.
The item 3, a resolution relative to the application of Baja California Cantina LLC for a restaurant retail liquor license to be used at Baja California Cantina, 7701 Crestwood Boulevard, Birmingham, in the Hingawarship parties.
Motion on the aisle.
Second.
All right. This item did meet all of the requirements, as well as the applicant attended the Eastwood Neighborhood Association meeting on 10/6/22. Nine were in attendance, one did not vote, and eight supported. Are there any questions from the council or any comments from the public? Seeing nobody, I think we're ready for the vote.
All right, we'll call for the vote.
All right.
All right, thank you. Item number 3 passes. Next item.
Item 4, a resolution relative to the application of Derek Laron Bell for a towing service license to be used at Bell Towing, 2730 Warrior Road, Birmingham, to operate one record on the streets of Birmingham.
Motion on the aisle.
Second.
All right, Counsel, go ahead. I'm sorry, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. This item does not meet zoning, and I'd like to make a motion. We send this back to Public Safety Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to send this back to zoning?
Public Safety.
Public Safety, I'm sorry. Back to Public Safety. Any questions, Counselors? Yes, Ms. Clark?
That's my recommendation, or that's my motion. How about that?
Okay, but we're not referring it for zoning.
No, it does not meet the Public Safety zoning requirements. Therefore, we're moving it back to Public Safety due to it not meeting the requirements.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Any other questions regarding this item? So the vote before us is to move this back to Public Safety. All right, thank you. This item, number 4, will be reverted back to Public Safety. Next item.
Item 5, an ordinance to further amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, transferring $46,500 from Mayor's Office Grant Match and appropriating $46,500 to non-departmental transfer to Fund 36 Grant Match and to further amend the grants managed fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023 by appropriating $46,500 to Mayor Court Vista per award received.
Okay, can I give a motion a second so we can entertain this item?
I move approval.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Abbott, you pulled this from consent.
I did, I did. And at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, I asked how many of these people would be assigned to the city council office? And I sort of got the feeling that the answer was zero. And I wanted to know why, because the city council has needs also for this kind of assistance, and I thought that we should be included since we're part of the city government.
Yes, ma'am, Madam.
Okay, we could just, thank you. Chief, go ahead.
It's just a simple request. So if you all would like one, we can make certain that our point person for the Vista program assigns one to the council. It's just a request.
I would just feel certain that Mrs. Kidd would be contacting you soon.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. That was my question, and it's been answered. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
At least one.
Because I thought that's what we were told at that meeting, so, thank you. Appreciate it. We clarified it now.
We need clarification. We need more of it in our lives.
Thank you. All right, Counselors. At this time, we have a motion and a second with the clarification, and we're ready for the vote. All right, thank you. Item number 5 passes. Next item.
All right. Item 8, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the sale of real estate between the city of Birmingham and Transportation Billing Solutions LLC, under which Transportation Billing Solutions will purchase the city's interest in property located at 305 and 309 19th Street, Insulet, for the amount of $11,279.64, and upon such other terms and conditions as are contained in the contract, and authorizing the mayor to execute. A should be quit claim, deed, and such other documents and instruments as are required to finalize the sale of the property on terms of the contract. This is an item of permanent operation. I need UC to pass it today.
Motion to UC? Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now I need a motion on the item.
Move the item? Second.
All right, thank you, Counselors. This is an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute this contract for the sale of the Transportation Billing Solutions LLC. Any questions regarding this item?
I do have one question.
Yes, Mrs. Abbott?
Okay, we don't own this property. We just have a, like a lien on it or something to that effect.
Chief Mitchell or Chief, do we have any?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. No other questions? We're ready for the vote. All right, thank you. That item passes. Next item.
A C-17, a resolution, amended resolution number 942-21, adopted by the council June 22, 2021, authorizing and executing, delivering agreement with... 2021, authorizing, admitting, executing, and delivering agreement with SHI International Corporation, a New Jersey corporation through software agreement, number AE 814 419, I'm sorry, 814 19, that's SHI, through a cooperative purchasing agreement authorized by the state of Alabama Department of Examiners of Public Accounts to provide well-based software as a service, software specifically C Click Fix, an online smartphone application that allows citizens to report code enforcement and other non-emergencies be amended to correctly reflect the amount to not exceed $53,307.75 in year two, I'm sorry, in year two of the agreement, and $54,373.99 in year three of the agreement, and for the total compensation paid by the city pursuant to this agreement shall not exceed $160,941.15.
Motion on the aisle. Second.
All right, thank you. And I did note who pulled this item from consent. Dr. Oakland, thank you.
Yeah, I just really had a request. So that moving to the software platform for our 311 system was a major transition for the city, and our system was broken before. I imagine that there's been some, you know, significant challenges in trying to make this transition. And so I just wanted to make a request. If we could have, you know, Chief Fields and especially Director McLendon provide the council with an update on how that transition, you know, is going, with the expectation, you know, I just want to make it clear that, you know, this is not, I never expected this to be a miracle cure for our 311 problems, and I totally expect that, you know, it will take some time for us to, you know, fully and get, fully transition, get the hang of doing business and communication through this platform. But if we could just, you know, have, you know, Chief Fields or and/or Director McLendon, you know, provide some update to the council, that'd be appreciated.
Madam President?
Yes, chief.
So it will be, yes, sir, Councilor Oakland, it will likely be the project management team, so not Chief Fields, which will consist of Ms. Alicia Lumpkin, Patrick McLendon, his team will be a part of it, but also our 311 and 911 teams. So Chief Mitchell noted that we will get with Madam President about a committee of the whole presentation for you all. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I do want to echo the rollout and the use of the C Click Fix has given some considerable, added some robustness, if we could say this, to the reporting and to the, for the residents that I know in District Seven that have used the tool, the feedback, and just some of the awareness, the visibility, has really been beneficial. And so I think it would also be beneficial to get that communication back to all of us, so it's something that we could help to disseminate to our residents, and that we better understand what this, how this process is helping 311. So thank you. Counselor Protem, I'm sorry, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification. Status-wise, it is not rolled out yet, has it? I thought it was in beta testing.
So, no, there are phases of it that are rolled out. So apart of what the council and the public are seeing, citizens can still go in and register their complaints. The piece that we're still testing is the connect between when the complaint is filed and then going to the respective department, then the report back and close out so that a citizen or the councilors can see that. But citizens are still able to register their complaints.
Yeah, I'm aware that we can access it and submit complaints, but I didn't feel like it had officially rolled out, where we all have communications about how to use it. I mean, you can go fiddle around and figure out how to use it.
There has, well, I'll let the chief answer.
Yeah, so there has been a phased rollout. So portions of it have been, when we first initially rolled it out, it was, it was done to a pilot group, but that group expanded the reach because they said, hey, we have access to it. So then we did a subsequent rollout to say, hey, we are in beta testing, but the team has done rollouts since. And that's a part of the piece we need to provide you all with an update on, because there are citizens who use it and who have access to it, but we never did a formal public rollout.
Yeah.
But it was out there, so that's technically a rollout. So the team will update the entire council and the citizens on where we are in that testing and the accessibility to them as well.
Yeah, and, you know, I guess I understand it, the way you just said it. I just feel like, I, well, I personally stopped telling people to use it because I felt like you all needed time to test it. And so I guess I've just been kind of waiting for the formal, like, okay, we've tested it, we've got the service levels where we wanted, and we're ready to roll it out formally.
And so a part of it was the downloading of the app that citizens could have available, too. That's why it, the request from Councilor Oakland is timely. We just need to provide the council and the citizens with where we are and its usability across the city. It's time for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, question? Counselor Protem?
I was just really going to give positive feedback. I really enjoy using it, even just as a resident, because I've been able to submit complaints even just as a counselor, as a resident, and just getting that feedback and be able to update people on that. I really, really like that. I think it's been very positive, because I've seen things I've turned in, and then a couple of weeks later it would have been resolved. So I really think this would be very good for all the residents to use. So thank you so much.
And chiefs, if you all would include in that communication to us, I know that some of us have been able to utilize someone to come in and actually make presentations, or to do kind of like that soft launch of knowing how to use the device and the system. So if that could also be a part of that communication, I think that would be helpful to all of us.
Will do, yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. All right, we're ready for the vote then. Thank you. Wonderful. That item passes. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item 50, a resolution setting a public hearing November 29, 2022, to consider doctor of orders to amend the City of Birmingham zoning ordinance to include revisions to the opioid replacement therapy treatment facilities in addition to medical cannabis.
Thank you. You've got to have a motion and a second to set this public hearing on November 29.
Second.
All right, we're ready for the vote. All right, thank you. We've set that public hearing for November 29, 2022. Next item. All right, thank you. At this time, councilors, we'll entertain your comments from each of your districts. I'll start with, are you ready, Ms. Clark? All right, thank you, Ms. Clark. District Eight.
Thank you, Madam President. So District Eight was jumping with Halloween festivities last night. I started out with Susan Palmer in Central Park with her candy giveaway, and spent the rest of the evening with the AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club with Shipt, and the nighttime Outlaws Mustang Club, which I think their name tells what they do at night, but they were engaged in some very positive engagement with our kids, and it was so fun to see the creative costumes and just good, safe, fun. There were droves of children, and Shipt really created a fun engagement with costumes and candy and other stuff. Also, 94.9 was so big, the street party with Parks and Recreation, that I couldn't find parking, so I just kept going. But I saw that they were having a really big time. So really proud of that. And neighborhood meetings in the, also just want to say, we were hap, District Eight was really happy to host the 81st Magic City Classic at our beloved Legion Field. It was so great to see so many people, visitors and residents alike enjoying themselves. It felt like the old times. And congratulations to Alabama State University for getting the win, and congratulations to us, Birmingham, for putting on yet another world-class event. We've got some neighborhood meetings this week. The Fairview Neighborhood will meet today at 5:30 via conference call. You can call my office at 205-254-2304 to get the dial-in information. The Thomas Neighborhood also meets today in person. They gather at the Mount Hebron Baptist Church Thomas at 6:30, and please remember to mask up if you're attending in person. Also note that the Safe Haven Initiative with Parks and Rec is still, still going at select recreation centers. Kids can come out for tutoring, snacks, recreation, and more in the 3:30 to 7:30 time range at the following rec centers. ML King on Mondays, Central Park Rec Center on Tuesdays, Enslie Rec on Wednesdays, and Harrison Rec Center on all three nights, Monday through Wednesday. And please use these resources and keep your kids safe and learning after school. Also, the District Eight walking group is still going every Thursday. At 8:00 AM sharp is when we start, about a 1.5-mile loop across, around the crossplex, starting at Starbucks, and we welcome all fitness levels, no registration needed, just show up. And keep in mind that the City of Birmingham's Community Arts Grant Program is live. This grant program will support four community arts collaborations that benefit the City of Birmingham with grants of $10,000 each. You can go to Create Birmingham's website, which is www.createbirmingham.org, to find out more information. That concludes the District Eight remarks. If I may, I'd like to read the District Nine announcements for Counselor Tate. So the Wylem Neighborhood will meet this evening at 6:00 PM in person at Wylem Library, which is located at 4300 Seventh Avenue, Wylem. You can also join the meeting via conference call by dialing 720-740-9863. The access code is 6589380. Also, meeting on Wednesday, November 2, is the Assipco Finley Neighborhood. They get, they meet at 5:30 via conference call. That dial-in information is 952-206-4918, and the access code is 223418. Central Pratt is meeting next week on Monday, November 7, at 6:00 PM. The conference call dial-in is 720-740-9732, access code 3488808. Also, the Sherman Heights Neighborhood meets that same night, Monday, November 7, at 6:00 PM via conference call. That dial-in number is 952-206-4918, and the access code is 223418. And note that the next public safety meeting will be on Tuesday, November 8. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, November 3, by 1:00 PM. That concludes the announcements for District Nine.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. Eastwood Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday, November 3, at 6:30 at Habitat for Humanity Training Center on Crestwood Boulevard. And to echo Counselor Clark's statement, it was great to see everybody at the Classic in District Eight. I think that, I know we had the Classic last year, but I feel like that this year it was sort of like how it was pre-COVID, which was good to see everybody having such a good time, and that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Counselor Moore, you ready? Go ahead, Counselor Moore.
So yes, we have a couple of Neighborhood Association meetings that are taking place. Collegeville Neighborhood Association meeting will be taking place at Antioch Baptist Church at 6:00 PM. Maple Grove will be meeting by conference call at 6:00 PM. Brumman Heights will also be meeting at Brownsville Heights Community Center at 6:00 PM, and Zion City Neighborhood Association will be meeting by conference call at 6:00 PM. For details around login information, please go to the Birmingham City Council website and scroll to the District Four page and find that information. And just want to say, happy no-shave November to all the men in the room.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Well, I guess the no-shave November doesn't apply to the rest of us, but certainly, you know, I was just noticing, all the guys, everybody has a beard. I mean, okay, y'all, November has arrived. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting will be November 10, at 3:30 PM here in the council chambers. Neighborhood associations, tonight, we have Forest Park South Avondale meeting at the Avondale Regional Library at 6:30, and next Monday, the Glen Iris Neighborhood will meet at 6:30 also at both St. Elias Maranite Catholic Church and via Zoom for people who can't get out. The Glen Iris Neighborhood Association held a cleanup on Saturday, which was very successful, and, and we actually had a good time. The weather was gorgeous, and, and we had a lot of, we even had a man from Homewood come over and help. He just, like, showed up. It was very nice. I want to wish Dr. Lee a happy birthday. His birthday is on Saturday, November 5, and he's just a child, so, anyway, but he is the best assistant. I'm sure other people would beg to differ, but I'm pretty sure he's the best. So, anyway, and I also want to remind residents of District Three to continue to visit our website, because we continue to add stuff to it and take stuff off that's out of date. So it's www.bhamdistrictthree.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Moore, believe you have one more item?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot one last thing. So we're supposed to be, on November 12, we're having our D4 Ham Drive in Engle Nook. So at 10:00 AM, from 10 to 12 PM at Engle Nook Rec Center, we will be giving away free hams for the Thanksgiving holiday. So 4016, 37th Avenue North is the location of Engle Nook Rec Center. So if you are in need of a ham, please come out, November 12.
Thank you. Counselor Oakland?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association meeting is tonight. That is at 6:30 PM at the Avondale Library. Want to remind folks that the Day of the Dead Festival, or the Dia de los Muertos Festival, this year is a little different. It's not at Pepper Place this year. It's at Slos Furnace, and that's tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. You can get tickets at the gate. Those are $15, so don't go to Pepper Place, go to Slos Furnace. For my colleagues, there is a, another, this month's Jefferson County Citizen, Jefferson County City Counselors Coalition is tomorrow at the Hoover Sports Park from 11:30 to 1:00, and I can forward you guys the information on that. And then finally, we will have a Transportation Committee meeting Monday, November 14, at 2:00 PM in the city council chambers. Items can be submitted to the agenda by contacting Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a good time at Classic this past week. I really enjoyed it. I definitely, so my sister and I were talking, and we said it was a different air this time, more positive, and didn't feel like there was a lot of violence in the area. It really felt like, you know, like a family reunion, so I was really happy to hear that. As far as neighborhood meetings, Oakwood Place Neighborhood meeting will meet today at Harrison Park at 4:00 PM. Mason City will meet today via conference call at 4:30 PM. The call-in number is 712-770-8017, and the code- The call-in number is 712-770-8017, and the code is 843426. The North Tidusville Neighborhood Meeting will meet tomorrow at Memorial Park Recreation Center at 5:00 PM. The next PIC committee meeting will be today at 2:00 PM in the council chambers. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will meet Monday, November 14th at 3:30 PM. Submissions are due next Wednesday, November 9th by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next Budget and Finance Agenda. Email submissions to loquita.wilson@birminghamal.gov. And also, starting today from 1:00 to 3:00, we will have our Senior Fit Health Fair today at Railroad Park. And there will be free food, free exercise demonstrations. It's going to be a lot of fun. So for more information on exciting events happening in District Six, visit our website at www.d6bham.com. Also, please go out to vote next Tuesday. We have a lot of important things we have to vote on. Not only are we voting on the sheriff, if you're in Bestemmer, the Bestemmer DA, but a lot of constitutional amendments, I think that's the most important one. The Naya Law, which is what happened with Naya Blanchard, is going to be on there to remove the slavery language in our Constitution, is going to be on there. And there are a few other things that are going to be, we have like four, five, six on there, so please encourage your friends to go vote because we have had a low voter turnout for the last few years. So please make sure to mark on your calendars to go vote next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Proten. These are the announcements for District Seven. We have several bulk trash and pickup dates scheduled for this week. Today, the schedule is for Industrial Center and Tarpley City. For Wednesday, November 7th, there'll be pickup in Grisilla Heights and East Brownsville. On November 3rd, that's Thursday, the pickup will be in Roosevelt City. And on Friday, November 4th, the pickup will be at Germania Park South. We also have one neighborhood meeting this week, and that's at the Jones Valley Neighborhood Association. They'll be meeting in person at the Poudley Library. Then on Monday, the Grisilla Heights Neighborhood will meet at the Mary Door Center, and that's in person at 3:00 PM. And the Poudley Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday via Zoom at 4:00 PM. If you need that information, you can call the office, and we'll give you that login information for that Zoom call. On Saturday, November 19th, the D7 Thanksgiving, our Turkey Giveaway and our Week of Thanksgiving will be held at the First Baptist Church Roosevelt City. That's 6012 Malcolm Avenue, Birmingham, 35228. That's at 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, or while supplies last. So we'll start at 10:00 AM, and there is only one item per household that will be given away. Please dial 311 to report a missed pickup, or the D7 hotline at 205-304-1797. Also, you can use that number to report any illegal dumping. I do want to echo the sentiment that has already been expressed. We survived Magic City Classic Week. There were so many activities. I just want to thank the citizens and the residents of Birmingham, even though we were in the illustrious District Eight at Legion Field, all throughout the city, there were so many things that were going on. And so I just want to thank all the residents, everyone who, you just gave out the hospitality. And I'm sure that anyone came into our city this past week, where really had a gracious time, so we thank you. Kudos also to Alabama State University. This is their first win in four years, so we know how that challenge goes between both teams, so we're excited for both universities. I know they were excited to have all of their alums and fans and students there. Also, I would like to thank PIO, that's Kim Garner, and the whole PIO team, Cody, Alicia, and Alyssa, and Rhonda, for the, if you noticed, we did have an updated opening video. We did preview it last week, and we had some shout-outs for our first year together, but I do just want to make note again of how appreciative we are for keeping those videos updated for us. At this time, yes, Madam Proten?
I don't think we thank our joint chiefs enough because I saw Chief Mitchell really didn't enjoy the Classic. I know somebody has to do it, so I want to tell you guys a really good job. There were a lot more vendors this year. I noticed the last few years, they were kind of a little scarce, but I really, I really think it was good. I know we had problems with the gates, but you know, I know that's a bigger problem we have in general. So I just want to say thank you for a really, really good week. I had a lot of people my age say they really, really enjoyed the Classic. They felt like it was more inclusive of every age group this time, so thank you. Oh, and Chief Moore, you know, thank you.
Thank you very much. We know the Classic, I hope it's an intergenerational activity for all of us, so we have it paced for everybody, so that is good. I do want to personally thank, and just internally, I'd like to thank our council admin, administrative team, especially Jeff McDaniel. He moved around and really wanted to be sure that we were accommodated as a council and for our staff, and so we thank you. There was a lot of work that had to be done, and that entire team. I think of Ms. McGee and all the staff that had to, as people were coming in and getting their accommodations, they really assisted our residents and us as a council. So thank you all very much, Ms. Kidd, Jeff, and that entire team. Thank you all. At this time, councilors, we will go ahead and call upon our speakers. We do have four speakers that are signed up. So Mr. Clerk, if you will call the name, and as your name is called, if you'll just be reminded, you do have three minutes, and we look forward to hearing from each of you.
First of all, let me take good morning to everyone. Always a deed and honor to come down here, especially for me to see a young man saying, you know, getting all this knowledge that can help him down the road. But first of all, let me tell everybody, I hope you be able to go out and vote on the November 8th, and we do have a governor on the ballot, so I hope you all go out and consider her. And also, I would like to note the impact that the Magic City Classic had on this last game we had, the economic impact. Now, the reason I'm here today is because I attend that Bruno Center, Physical Fitness Center across from Carver High School, and I fell over there. It was raining that building like crazy over there, and most of the equipment is out of order, and we have a good group of senior citizens that attend that building. I fell over there now. You know, I'm not going to make an issue because I didn't get hurt. So we need to look into our facility. And I went by North Birmingham, it was raining over there. I attend 16th Street Baptist Church, and I do two of the people comes out the city. And the fountain right across there in Kelly Ingram Park, the fountain across there, they're not working. People be complaining about why these things are not working in our city. But yet it's still now. We can give the BJCC money to build a theater over there. We gave them money to tear down Carrollway Hospital. We gave $4 million over there for the war game. So it's time for us to put some money back into our community. My street hadn't been paved since 1979. So what I'm saying to the city council, please, y'all invest some money back into our city. And we need that. I mean, we are first-class citizens, and I'm not going to accept anything but first-class. We very seldom have our garbage picked up, you know, and trash picked up on the street. We just, we just got to do it better. The only thing I'm asking you all to do, just put more money back into the community. We always talked about the kids. Now, one thing I saw in the Classic, there was nothing set aside for the kids. The city gave over a million dollars for that event. No kids, all the kids should have had free passes to the game. This is how we can in turn prevent crime. I just hope that we do a better job in term of spending money back into our community. Again, let me say this, let me say this to you. Appreciate you all, take the time to go out to vote on the 8th. That's very important. I got a lot of time tied up in this election, so please go out to vote on the 8th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next speaker?
Is it Darren Arnold?
Mr. Arnold, good morning.
Yes, how y'all doing? Then I'm here to bring an issue to the city council because it's been like three weeks I have been getting the runaround. And I'm pretty sure that each one of y'all maybe, or maybe not, drive a city vehicle. I was, I was an employee here at the city of Birmingham, and I was involved in an accident back in December the 31st of 19, and which the city, they was aware of all this. And what happened was, the city never took the initiative to pay these folks, and back in '20, I got a letter from State Farm saying that they were going to sue me. And I brought the letter up there to the attorney's office and gave it to them. Okay, we're going to take care of it. Now, three weeks ago, I refinanced my house, and guess what happened? The city never took care of it. They put a lien on my house. They suspended my license. And now that I have to get a high-rate insurance called SR22, which is a high-rate insurance. And I've been in contact with an attorney here, I spoke with him several times, Mr. Cooper, and he had been giving me the complete runaround. He had been passing the buck off, and I'm supposed to be at work now. I cannot be at work because I don't have any license. And all I asked is someone to look into this, and he keeps saying that he don't, that he never got anything from the attorney who's representing State Farm. And I was in contact with him. He said that he got, he sent Mr. Cooper everything that he asked for, and he's still passing the buck off. My house had a lien on, and what I did not even know until three weeks ago. And then I just got this in the mail Friday, this past Friday, they suspended my license. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Thank you. If you will contact, I know if you'll contact the appropriate administrative office, then they'll be able to assist you. Thank you for bringing that information to us.
Yes, ma'am, madam president. We're certainly aware of Mr. Arnold's situation. Certainly sorry for your inconvenience. However the matter is, in our office of the city attorney, we're very aware and tracking.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Next speaker? Good morning, Mr. Pipeway.
Good morning, peace and love, council and mayor staff. So I'm standing here with two of our 10-member committees, members of the 100 Black Men Deep Walk. We are an organization that has been together for over seven years here inside the city. Just to give y'all a little update on some of our still efforts that we're doing to help decrease violence within our community. On Saturday, November 12th, we have an upcoming cleanup in Wiggins Park, starting at 10:00 AM. Address for it is 3301 Jefferson Avenue Southwest. Also in addition to that, we have Stop the Violence Expo fundraiser coming up this Saturday on November 5th. Location is 1155 Bankhead Highway, Birmingham, Alabama. For those who don't know, we're basically an organization of men, women, and children in different agencies and organizations from throughout the city that basically came together to want to bridge the gap in our community. We understand that the violence that happens in our community has multiple different sources. However, there are several people that are working in different silos. One of the things that we push amongst people is saying that the more we work together, the more we network, the more we able to fill the needs of the different people. We never come before anyone saying that we are the end-all, be-all, but we do let them know of the things that we have going on. This quarter of this year, we focus our efforts on the west side of town. So our last cleanup, we were actually in the Oakwood Place Neighborhood, and on this next one, we're going to Wiggins. Some of you all have had the pleasure of walking with us through the community, and y'all know what we do, boots really on the ground. On January the 15th, Sunday, January 15th, that's Martin Luther King Week of next year, we'll be hosting our next 100 Black Men Stop the Violence Walk. We'll be starting at Harrison Park, and we'll be ending in the Wiggins neighborhood. We brought some flyers just to share with the council on some of the events that we have, but it has our contact information for anybody that want to get involved or want to know what we got going on, and we just thank y'all for their time.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Pipeway, if I could just get you to announce the Wiggins Park, you're in D7, so give me that date. So we can join you.
So the cleanup for Wiggins Park will be Saturday, November 12th, starting at 10:00 AM. And just like all our cleanups, you don't have to bring nothing but your body. We make sure we have gloves, pickup sticks, vests, the bags, the whole nine yards, just teaching people to take pride in your community.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Yeah, hey, thank you, Madam President. Hello, Cory. Just wanted to ask about the time of the January 15th walk, starting at Harrison Park, and the approximate distance to get from Harrison to Wiggins.
Yes, so it's a three-mile, it's over a three-mile walk. All our walks, we intentionally go through different neighborhoods, basically spreading the message of peace and love. We knock on doors, we talk to people, we let them know who we are. There are agencies that come with us that provide different resources. We just be real.
Yeah, y'all were in District Eight last time.
Yeah, you know, so it's people that got these resources that don't have that connection with the community or don't always feel safe going into the community, knocking on the door of somebody they don't know, or walking up to a young person they don't know, saying, "Hey, I'm such and such, this is what I do and what I got to do."
What time does it start?
Yeah, so we're going to kick that one off at 10 o'clock.
10:00 AM, okay.
10:00 AM. And we always end all of our walks with a free community space event to where we provide games, free food, entertainment, moonwalks and stuff for the community. We always dispel the narrative when they say you can't do nothing positive in our neighborhoods. We showed that there's a lot on several different occasions, and y'all can check our track record. Also, my brother wanted me to let you all know that about the other efforts that we do as far as the free haircuts in the park, we slowed them down during COVID. We will be picking that up after January for the upcoming year, as well as other things we got involved.
Thank you. And we just have one more question from Councilor Moore.
Not necessarily a question, just wanted to kind of applaud the 100 Black Men Deep for the work that they do. I've actually had an opportunity to come out to one of the walks that they did in Collegeville, very organized. You got folks that's, you know, directing traffic, trying to make sure everybody stays safe. You got, you know, large crowds of men that, you know, are really out and about in the community, knocking on doors, talking to folks, you know, really engaging with the community. And, you know, I think a lot of times when people are able to see that, they really get excited about it and really, you know, are encouraged by you all's courage. So I just want to say thank you for the work that you all do in the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
FYI to put on everybody's mind, so we also doing the walk. He said it's over a three-mile walk, but we also have vehicles that's in the walk that's provided with water, fruit, snacks. If you happen to get tired and feel like you can't walk, we need to take you a break, so all that's provided with our walk.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Councilor Clark, I'll let you end it out.
I'd just like to remind you all to, you know, come to the park board and make sure you're, you know, legit reserving the park for your activities. Just do that for them.
Thank you for that reminder, Councilor Clark.
Thank you.
And just to end, we're called the 100 Black Men Deep Walk, however comprised of everyone. It's not just one race, it's not just one ethnic group. We had Councilor Quinn before he was a council out in Gate City, you know, saying sharing the message of peace and love, but we intentional about our men taking the place of leading and protecting our communities. So thank y'all for your time.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. Next speaker?
Morning, Mr. Muhammad.
Good morning. William Muhammad, 411 Loraine Street. I wanted to take this opportunity to speak to you about the color of money. You might feel like it's not... to speak to you about the color of money. You might feel like it's not related to anything you talked about today, but I want to show you where it is. Poverty is perpetuated when communities lose access to banks. 60% of the black population is unbanked or underbanked compared to 20% of white populations. Blacks pay higher interest on mortgages and loans. Blacks pay more fees for basic services than similarly situated communities. In 1863, when the Massaciation Proclamation was signed, the black community owned a total of 0.5% of the total wealth in the United States. Today, we own 1%, 159 years later. Blacks are 70% of the city of Birmingham and nearly 50% of Jefferson County. The Birmingham Waterworks Board recently removed all money from the two black banks that are in the city. Taking money out of black banks is helping, what was said was that taking money out of black banks is helping ratepayers. And those who talked against that talked about the waterworks needing to be a good corporate citizen. I was asked by the news media to prove that their intent was racist. There's no way to prove racist intent. I can tell you that the results were racist. The Honorable Louis Farrakhan has taught us that wherever there's confusion, point out the contradiction. If this was done by the people who pushed it, saying they want to keep rates down, I say bull, sugar, honey, iced tea. Revenue is made up of more than rates. That's what most people don't understand. And the contradiction is that at the same time, I found out, the day that I found out that they were taking money out of the two black banks, all of the money, then I also found out that they are negotiating at the same time to reduce the Jefferson County sewer collection rates. The law of the state of Alabama says that when you cannot agree on a collection rate, it defaults to 7.5%. Well, they are negotiating with the county to reduce that, but they didn't say anything about that affecting the rates that the people have to pay. I say that we need to negotiate reducing legal fees over there. That conversation never come up. The same people who are pushing to take money out of black banks are the same people who support the fact that the person over there collecting legal fees, even though we have a team of legal people, this person has collected $600,000 in six months. And when the rates, when the budget said 1.2 million for legal fees, that person every year bill 1.1 million. So I say it don't make no difference how many lawyers have over there. 1.1 million gonna get spent, whether it's one or whether it's 10. So I just want to say that in my conclusion, that a lot of people got upset because there was talk of a rate increase that might be approximately 8%. I know that the waterworks is saying that inflation, which all of us are hit by inflation, inflation has made them want to charge, not want to charge, made them need $10 million more dollars than they have in the past. And I understand that. I went to the fish market the other day. Okay. I went to the fish market the other day to buy a pound of wagging fish, and I thought, sure, I was gonna spend $2. And they said it was $5.25. So I asked, when did fish go up this high? He said, it's been a minute now. So I said, you're talking about 60 seconds? So I mean, but I've been hit like that with my ice cream and everything. So I understand. I just wanted to say, and I've been told to close it down, but I just want to say that I understand that prices for pipe, prices for everything has gone up. I'm not opposed to a 3.9% rate increase, which is the normal, and that's below national average. But I must say to you in closing, the only way I can support any rate increase is if we have amnesty for those people who have been overbill, misbill. And I love the waterworks. I'm a defender of the waterworks. I consider that my family. But we need amnesty. At least we need to stretch out the payments longer. Make it more than the 90 days that they want to choose. Make it a year. It was a year, excuse me, I'm getting, it was a year it took them to straighten the bill. And I haven't been straightened out yet. So how you going folks to pay in 90 days? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muhammad. We appreciate you. Right, at this time, we do want to thank our officers who have been on duty today, Mr. Cedric Pinker, Derek Square, and Officer Mamadou Jalal. Did I get that right? I hope I did. Thank you very much. At this time, if we will entertain a vote for German. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.
Hi, we're here at the 81st Magic City Classic here in Birmingham to root on two very great teams, Alabama A&amp;M and Alabama State University. It's such a tradition for us in Birmingham to host this wonderful event. I've been told that this is the largest classic that takes place all during the year. We think we have about 85,000 fans, maybe inside and outside. Happy, happy classic. Yay! So we're out here at the parade. This has been amazing. I just saw Alabama State's band. I saw the Hornets drag the dog and kind of kick it. That was interesting. And that's Alabama A&amp;M. So this is just a great day, tradition, just to start off, get everybody hyped up, get the morale going right before we tailgate and we get to the game.
Many years tradition, right before the game, the morning of the game. It's 8:30. There are tons of marching bands. So we're in the parade, and we'll be going here for the next hour or so. Tons of folks along the route, and everybody's ready for a great day.
It brings back memories when I was in the marching band at Phillips High School. So this is an exciting time for me to see young people coming and keeping the trend going. So I'm just excited to be here to support Birmingham and support all of the visitors that are here.
We're just so excited for our fans, alumni, residents to come down to Historic Legion Field and take part of this activity. For me, the classic, I thought about it the other day, when they said the 81st classic. I haven't been to all 81, but I have been to quite a few since I was a little girl. It was always a family tradition. We almost looked forward to it like Christmas. So for me, this is a grand day, and I'm just excited, as president of the city council, to see our residents, the fans, the alumni, come to Historic Legion Field and have a great experience. Well, for Birmingham, we know our tradition in sports is very, very rich. We're here at the football capital of the South, as been called before. So we know we love football. We love getting together. We love the tailgating. And so for me, it's just a reminder of my childhood. I'm glad to be able to be here today. Just want to say, hey, everybody, enjoy yourself, pace yourself, and let's have a good time.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.